Okay, everybody, I want to start the school board meeting. It's Tuesday, May 11th at 7:00 PM. Welcome. It's nice to see chairs in the audience and people present. So, welcome back. We're getting there. So, we'll call this meeting to order, and item one's going to be adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any board discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item two, flag salute.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but you do need to call for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I knew better than that. I do apologize. Do we have any public comment on item one? Okay, seeing none? Do we have any?
See no public comment online.
No, Mr. Cassiopeo, no public comment via email.
Okay, thank you. I will again bring it back to the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two is the flag salute. Trustee Walker, if you'll lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the superintendent's report, and Superintendent Stokes is going to provide his report from the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Good evening. It's nice to be with you. As you know, we have had a resignation of the principal's position at Borderwick Bray Elementary School. And an interview process was held recently. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
And emerging from that process was Mrs. Cheryl Riquetta, who is being recommended to be the new principal at Borderwick Bray. I'd like to invite Mrs. Riquetta to join me at the podium. Mrs. Cheryl Riquetta currently is the vice principal at Fremont Elementary and gives me a great honor to introduce her to you tonight. Mrs. Riquetta has been with the district since 1997, so a veteran educator in our district. She has been a teacher of elementary students. I believe you had a little stint in there of middle school as well, if I recall. Mrs. Riquetta has also served as a teacher leader, a literary specialist. She helped roll out the Read by Grade Three program in the school district. As a result of that, her collaborative nature was seen regularly as she worked with staff members and other principals across the school district to help facilitate that program. She's also worked to help facilitate the good use of PLCs in our district and has been one that has stood out as someone who's been able to provide teacher professional development. As an administrator, she's been able to show her expertise and her experience in evaluating teachers and classified staff. She has been able to coach and collaborate with teachers on the topics of curriculum and instruction. Of course, in her role as vice principal, she's served diligently as the school's testing coordinator. She's very familiar with utilizing, maintaining, and studying, and using data at her site, and of course, has also interacted with both students and the public in her role as vice principal. So, really happy that someone of her qualifications and her abilities has been interested to take that next step. And so, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Mrs. Cheryl Riquetta as our next principal at Borderwick Bray Elementary School. Mrs. Riquetta is joined tonight by her family, and so I'd like for her to give a little introduction of her family members and then certainly trustees, if you have questions for her prior to her taking on that role, she's prepared to respond. Mrs. Riquetta.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes and members of the board. I'm very excited to be here tonight, and I'm very excited for the opportunity to work with Borderwick. I have my very supportive family here with me tonight, my husband, Robert, and then our four of our five kids. One is, our oldest son is, plays in the Mile High Jazz Band, so he had a gig tonight, so he couldn't be here. But I'm joined by my son, Adam, who's a senior at the high school, and my other son, Sam, who's a freshman at the high school, and then my daughter, Ellie, who's in seventh grade at Carson Middle School, and my son, Charlie, who's in fifth grade at Fremont.
Well, Cheryl, congratulations, first of all. I think Borderwick will be lucky to have you, and I know, working with Jennifer, you've, you know, you guys have done some good things over there at Fremont, so we're looking forward to seeing you at Borderwick. And, you know, Borderwick's had a nice reputation, has done a lot of good things over the years. And I think for some people, change is scary, but change is always good. And I think you're going to be welcomed there, and we look forward to, you know, what you do over there. We're thankful that you were interested, and again, congratulations.
Thank you very much. And I wanted to say real quick, too, I can't, I can't leave tonight without thanking Dr. Jennifer Ward that I've gotten to work with for the last four years. She has taught me so much, and I couldn't ask for a better mentor to get me ready for this next step.
Thank you very much. It's open to the board.
I'd just like to say congratulations also. I think you'll be a good fit for over there, and I know that Dr. Ward will miss you at Fremont, but we're glad to have you over at Borderwick. I happen to be the liaison or boardwork for the board, so I'm looking forward to working with you over the next year. So, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Stacy.
Just real quick, because I was the board member that, I represented the board in the interviews, and I have to tell you, I was very impressed with your, first of all, your letter was bilingual. That was very impressive. It showed that you knew what school you were going to and being very diversified in empathy for the whole student body. And then the packet you gave us for the presentation was just incredible. I think most of us took it home with us, so we're looking forward to seeing that. Just little, just a little hint is just, you graded the data stuff, but don't get dead in the numbers. Don't get driven down by the numbers. But the, other than that, it was just a great presentation, great interview. I was just very impressed with you the whole time, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments on the board? Okay, Cheryl, anything else from you?
No, I'm just, like I said, I'm very, very excited about, you know, I've had great opportunities in this district, and I'm excited about the future and the new opportunities that have been afforded to me, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Again, congratulations and family, thanks for supporting Mom. But again, congratulations.
Mr. President, members of the board, I have a few other items that I'd like to share with you this evening. First, I want to make sure that you all got word that on May 20th, we were planning to meet in a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and the trustees. Due to a variety of reasons, that meeting has been postponed, and we, if you would please, just as a placeholder, put September the 2nd down, and we will start that meeting at 6:00 PM. If any of you have ideas that you'd like to see as agenda items, if you'd just let me know, we'll try to set that up. I'd also like to remind the trustees, those of you who are interested and who can attend, we'll have a bond oversight committee meeting that is on May 20th, and that will start at 11:30 in the district office. If you would prefer to meet by Zoom, I can, if you'll just send me an email, I can make sure you get that information. Or if any members of the public would like to be part of that meeting, if you would call the district office, that number is 283-2100. We will make sure that you have access to that Zoom address as well. As most of you know, May 10th is an important statutory deadline in the school district, and that's the date when our certified staff members are required to return in their letters of intent. And that gives the school district an opportunity to know which certified staff members will be coming back the following year, the next year. And just to give you a little idea of where we are in terms of knowledge from that exercise, we have 50 notices of resignation or retiring staff. So, it's about what we see on a typical year. Twenty-eight of those staff members are certified, two are administrative, and 20 are classified or support staff. Where this really hurts is that nine of our certified staff members are special education teachers. And so, that'll be a big job, trying to find that many special licenses in order to fill our special education vacancies. We also have, so they're not all teachers. We do have some that are speech pathologists and also school psychs, but still nevertheless, they're hard positions to fill. And then from our support staff members, six of those 20 are special education parapros. So, again, it seems like we're looking at a large number of special education vacancies that we are going to need to fill. Any questions about the staffing piece at this point? There'll be more information, obviously, as we move forward, and we are seeing people being hired. We just know that we're going to have to look under every conceivable place in order to find those special ed teachers. I'd like to provide a little report regarding our May 4th community PLC. As you know, we are at a place within our strategic plan process that we are starting to put conditions in place so that we can refresh, as it were, our strategic plan. And just for the public's information, maybe this will help put things in a certain context. But when the, when the first strategic plan for Carson City School District was developed, it spanned a year of activity of five years. So, really, the Empower Carson City document spanned a period of time from 2012 to 2017. So, in the fall of 2016, the school district actually went through a process to review the existing document, and we went through a series of community PLCs where interested members of the community came together, and we reviewed the goals, the objectives, and the strategies that were part of the strategic plan. And at the end of that process, we came up with essentially our Strategic Plan 2.0, or Empower Carson City, that was intended to then work through the year of 2022. And so, we're now in that point where we are trying to, again, review the goals, review the objectives, and review the strategies that are intended to be looked at critically and to see if we need to modify any of those statements. And so, that's where we are right now. On May 4th, we had a, a community PLC, and one of the things that's changing rapidly in our business is the concept of equality and equity. And unfortunately, I think there's been some misunderstanding, and I kind of wanted to get out there and offer myself for questions to the public, or people in the public could contact me with questions. But our goal in this process is really not to bring race into this at all. What we're wanting to do is to provide an opportunity that is the best opportunity we can give our students to access to education. That's really the pure and simple fact. We want to make sure that any student who walks through our halls have the ability to have access to the programming, to the activities, to the ideals, to the teachers, to the curriculum, to the materials. Anything that we use and offer to one student, we want to make sure that that's offered to all. And so, I know that there were some concerns that we were taking this in a political direction, that we were professing to follow a certain ideology, and that's just not the case. Our strategic plan has been developed by members of Carson City. It's been approved by our trustees. It's had input from educators, and we want to continue that process. That's really our goal. And so, we anticipate being able to do that, not only with the information that we've received this year, and it was a very good meeting. We learned a lot about some of the concerns that people had, and that was important for us to hear. And so, as we move into next fall, so that next winter, when we hit that year, 2022, we'll have Strategic Plan 3.0. That will be fresh, it will be new, it'll be reviewed, and then ultimately, it will have the approval, the stamp of approval from the trustees. So, with that, Mr. President, I appreciate this time to speak to you and would ask if you have any questions of me regarding my report? If not, I'll turn the time back over to you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Stokes? Mike.
Mr. Stokes, you know, one of the things I'm thinking about when you're talking about equity, and it is easy to kind of go down the rabbit hole with that, is there's a lot of graphics, and I think maybe even just a PLC focused on what that means, and really, it's, it's not everybody getting the same thing. It's, it's every student getting what they need to be successful in school. And some definitions of what those might be, the different types of supports and accommodations we have, so that people understand exactly what we're talking about. And I think that that might help as just maybe a session to kind of help educate the public of what we mean when we're saying equity in education.
Thank you, Trustee Walker.
Any other comments or questions on the board? Seeing none, thank you. We're going to move on to board reports. This is for information only. Do we have any of our high school representatives here? So many of you look so young, I thought for sure one of you were the high school representative. Yeah, they probably are. Okay, how about Nevada Association of School Board update?
No update, other than just director's training for Mike. It is now, the Elko one, has been moved the last weekend in June, which is the 25th and 26th. It conflicted with some of the other directors who still had school in session and had graduations the weekend before. And our next training is sometime in September, but we're going to look and see if that needs to be adjusted. We might just focus on the November training conference.
Joe, just, Mr. President, we also met our region to replace our very own trustee Welke in the NIAA, and so, this committee of us recommended Matt Hyde from Churchill take her place in June when her term expires. So, thank you for your service for our region, Stacy.
Ditto on that. Thank you very much for all you've done, many, many years. Okay, thank you for the update. We're going to go to board reports, but before then, I just wanted to just remind everybody, we are indoors, and we're subject to the protocols that are in place, not that we've set them up, but they are in place, and so I have to ask everybody who's in here to make sure they're wearing a mask. Anyway, thank you for your consideration. Moving on to board reports. Mike, let's start with you.
Quick update for Mark Twain Elementary School. So, they're busily getting the S-BAC completed, so they're hoping to have their testing, their makeup testing completed tomorrow, but they're excited they have 95% participation school-wide, and that includes many of the remote learners in their schools. So, congratulations to Mark Twain. That's all I have for my report.
On this thing, there's a microphone, and it works better than this microphone.
What happens when you get to the meeting three minutes beforehand, is the tutorial. I know, after 12 years. Just an note, wanted to thank everybody that showed up at the PLC. We actually had a really nice cross, yeah, cross-section of the community, which was nice. It was nice to see some new people there and not the same old, same old, and to get some discussion going. And then, thanks to Mr. Stokes and Dr. Delphine for inviting me to be on that principal's interview. It's quite the process, that takes a whole day, and they have so much to do. It's just amazing that what they put together to really show what the best candidate can be, so I appreciated that. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Dawn.
Dr. Conley at Eagle Valley Middle School has a few things tonight. The, for, this Friday, May 14th, they will be having a leukemia and lymphoma society fundraiser. If the students bring $3 as a donation, they can wear school-appropriate, non-standard student attire, hoodies, and hats. Also, MAP testing is completed. Students who raise their scores will be given a reward of a non-SSA students, standard student attire in the coming weeks. Also, Eagle Valley is in the process of interviewing and hiring some great staff members to be part of our growth as we gain more students and embark through the construction maze. And then I have one announcement about the Carson High School Band Program. I have a little flyer here. I can pass this around. They are having a spring celebration concert Wednesday, May 26th. It's actually the day after our next meeting. I'll probably mention it there, but this is a save the date. All five of their ensembles, including the Blue Thunder Marching Band, will be performing. It starts at 5:30, and it's going to be in the, on the football field. So, there's plenty of room out there to social distance. The public is invited. Please come and watch some music, 5:30, and should be done around 7:00 PM. So, Wednesday, May 26th. And that's my report.
Thank you.
Okay, for, let's see, Empire Elementary School, Miss Squires remind us that early this year, they received 20,000 grand from Office of Science Innovation Technology. With this money, they scheduled trainings with Green School National Network and the WIDA Consortium for training and teaching their student science with a focus on language development. This training- These trainings all take place on Mondays, so she's very grateful that she was able to continue with that training for the rest of the year. And the trainings are, have provided the teachers with strategies and skills in developing language skills with all the students focused around STEM. Let's see, I believe that was, that was all from her. And then from Seliger Elementary School, Misona tells us that they have completed the S-Back testing, except for a few students that will be doing that this week. And then on May 24th, they will be distributing the yearbook, and then the fifth graders will be celebrating Colonial Days. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Laurel?
For Fritsch Elementary School, they will be participating in Nevada Moves tomorrow. They will be meeting at 7:45 at John Mankin's Park in Silver Oak, and they're going to walk or bike to school from there. So my boys call it the Three Storey Park over there in John Mankin's Park. For Fremont Elementary School, Dr. Ward has said that they are working to improve their drop-off procedures, and they, and they are going to have all parents use the parent drop-off lane from 8:00 to 8:30 starting May 18th. And they're hoping to improve the safety for their staff and families, and they're asking all families to use turn signals and refrain from texting or distractions while on campus. And they will only have that changed for the morning routine. And so they'd also like to thank their SROs for helping to provide additional traffic support whenever possible. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Richard?
Yes, for Warwick Bray, they're completing their S-Back assessments this week for grades three through the fifth. And they want to remind everybody that students' laptops need to be returned during the last week of May, and they're to be returned to their home-earned teachers. They also have a field day scheduled for Wednesday, June 2nd. And it's going to be outside, so they're asking the parents to make sure they send a hat, sunscreen for their kids, because it may be hot that day, so they wanted to remind people of that. They also want to remind people that the last day for the students is June 3rd, and they'll be being dismissed at 12:40 PM. And they'd also like to thank the parents of all the students for this year. It's been a tough year for everybody, and the principal wanted to let everybody know that they couldn't have made it through the year without the parents' support, so they wanted to thank them. In Carson Middle School, student Chromebooks will be collected on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, May 25th, 26th, and 27th. It'll be starting with the sixth grade on the 25th, seventh grade on the 26th, and eighth grade on the 27th. They are also finalizing the details for the eighth grade promotion, which will be held on June 4th. Students and family will have the option of either walking or driving through a promotion ceremony. And there'll be different starting times depending on where you follow the alphabet. For example, students with the last name of A through F will line up at 9:45, and their promotion will start at 10:00 AM. Last name G through M will be, line up at 10:15, and their promotion will start at 10:30, and et cetera. It'll just go on through. And the last group, T through Z, will begin their lineup at 11:15 AM, and they'll be starting their promotion ceremony at 11:30. And they're also will be sending information home, starting Friday of this week, to all the eighth grade students, families who are graduating this year or being promoted this year. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Richard. And I apologize, but I don't have a report for Pioneer tonight, but I did want to take this early opportunity just to wish all of our high school students, especially our seniors, best of luck as they're wrapping up their, their assignments and, you know, getting ready for final exam preparation and all that stuff. So we'll have a chance to wish them well again, but I know this is a stressful time of year for everybody, and didn't want to miss out on an opportunity to wish them the best of luck. Okay, we're going to move, I'm sorry, item five, association reports. Do we have any association reports tonight? Seeing none. We'll move on to public comment. This is a chance to comment on items within our jurisdiction that are not already agendized. And we just simply asked that everybody keep their comments to no more than three minutes, and to not simply just repeat comments that we might have already heard by a previous speaker. So with that, we do have a few people that signed in for public comment, and if you did fill out a form, feel free to bring it up, but otherwise, everybody's welcome to come to the podium. We just ask that you state your name, and we're happy to hear what you have to say. So we'll start off with Karen Stevens. Oh, I'm sorry, can you turn the mic on? There's a button kind of at the bottom front.
I've been retired for about six years, so, anyway, good evening. I'm Karen Stevens. I'm retired from the Department of Education. I worked with the homeless children and the neglected and delinquent programs, federal grant programs. And so I've had a deep love for ensuring that children receive the care and supplies and education that they need. And why I'm here today is I'm very concerned about children wearing masks, because it is incredibly harmful. It cuts off their blood circulation, which they need to grow brain cells. And it, it's unnecessary. I, I believe all the board members were sent information via email yesterday and today from America's Frontline Doctors that explained the harms that mask-wearing causes to children. And I also have some pamphlets, if you're interested, that talk about how masks harm healthy people, which most of all, children. And so if anybody's interested in these, I can leave some at the table. And so I, I would ask that we stop these mask mandates and stop harming our children. And that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Maxine Bradshaw.
Thank you. My name is Maxine Bradshaw, and I appreciate your time here. I have recently heard about the American Frontline Doctors in the last six months, and they have had a crusade going by, I believe the number's over 100,000 doctors that have joined different causes and their organization. They are very well-versed in this. They are very concerned about the children in this country, not just this state, not just this county, not just this city, about the damage that masks-wearing does to these children. They know for a fact, they have reported on this, that the masks are not, the COVID-19 has never been really a risk to the younger generation. They're not the ones that are coming up with the disease. They're not the ones that are affected by it. They have a natural immunity to fight this, and we feel that the emotional damage that this does to children, I have a grandson in school in the Carson City area, and the damage to me that it does for these children, when I, when I babysit him and pick him up at school and have to see these kids coming out that they can't touch, they can't interact, they can't have any kind of a normal activity, and they're inhibited by even breathing. They know for a fact medically, it has been proven there are over 100,000 doctors in these organizations that have come forward and said, this is a very damaging, damaging effect to these children, physically, emotionally, mentally. And we need to just remove this. We need to take it out of our school district. They're not part of this issue. They are not part of this problem. I know that you have received emails recently on this. We've given the information forward. These, these are medical doctors. They're the ones who do have the information. They've given it. They've come forward. Some of them have even lost their licenses over this, because they have gone against what others are saying that are, are trying to portray something that does not exist here. I'm not saying COVID is not real. I'm not saying that people have not died of it, but I'm saying in our younger generation, in our children of school age, they are not the culprits. I mean, they are not the ones being affected by this, and we need to literally remove these masks from these children. You do have the power and authority to do that, and we want to see that done, to save our children. I mean, this is a decision that parents and grandparents are making to protect our children in this community. And I would think as a board that this would be something that you would want to embrace. So please, we need to do this, and we need to do it right away. These children need to have something to look forward to next year. They need to have something to look to next year when they start school in the fall again. They need to have this removed and these restrictions done. They're not part of the problem. They're not part of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only sign-in sheets I had, but if we have any other public comment, please. Again, come up to the podium and just state your name for the record.
Thank you. Did you want me to just leave this here?
You can just leave it there. We'll pick it up.
Thank you. My name's Dawn Ricaba, and I'm just gonna, I have four adult children. I'm hoping to have grandchildren. Well, not too soon, but yeah. But I just want to piggyback on the comments of these other two ladies. It's absolutely unconscionable. I think when, when history plays this back, the people that have stood up for the truth against the narrative, you know, it's, it's crazy to me that we need such a propaganda machine, so well-oiled and well-funded, to get people to comply with these, these measures. And one, one thing that was brought out recently is Stanford University recently, in October of 2020, came out with a study, and they're saying it's not only effective, not effective, masks are not only not effective, which the CDC also admits, and the WHO also says, that these lockdown measures have been inappropriate, and there's been vaccine manufacturing scientists, mad scientists, that have been involved in the vaccine industry who have, who are risking everything to say, we need to look at what we're doing here. But if you'll go and even just look at that Stanford article, it's like, are you gonna just roll over? This is about our kids. We gonna roll over and do what's comfortable, what Lord God Governor says? Or are we gonna do the right thing? Okay, most people don't, because if you stand up and do the right thing, you lose your license, you get ridiculed. But that's, that's the call before us today. But the, in summary, there was a couple things. Mask-wearing was shown to have significant side effects, such as decreased immune system, greater susceptibility to infectious agents, including bacteria and viruses, hypoxia, and young people get permanent neurological damage. Young people get permanent neurological damage when they're exposed to hypoxia and hypercapnia, which is, of course, the buildup. Okay, so the fact that we're all doing this thing, I'm sorry, is freaking crazy to me. It's not common sense. Most people know. Most people can get it. It's crazy. And I'm asking you guys to like, just, you know, you gotta stand up. We gotta stand up and quit doing the socially appropriate thing, and think about the long-term consequences, because history is going to show who's on the right side of this. And I hope a lot of us in this room can like, take a look in the mirror, drop a pair, and let's just do the right thing for our kids, okay? Because it's coming down to kids and grandkids. That's all I care about at this point. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any additional, yes, sir.
My name is Jason Tingle, concerned father. I, thank you, ladies. That covers that, so appreciate that. They've said everything I needed to say about that, but I am concerned, where, Mr. Stokes, where would I find this equity plan that you guys are talking about? Where would that be posted so I could see what you guys are referring to?
Mr. Tingle, the only plan that we have is our strategic plan, and it's on our webpage. It's clearly stated, it, you might see it under Empower 2017. Sorry, 22. Empower Carson City 2022.
So the main objective is what, say it one more time for me. I just couldn't.
Yeah, the main objective is to review that plan. It is consisted of five goals. Under each goal, there's a number of strategies and objectives, and they all have to do with education. So what you'll see is a review of those goals, objectives, and strategies to see if we're still on track for providing education the best way we can in the Carson City School District.
Fair enough. I, I'm gonna do the best I can to keep this under wraps, but forgive me for saying, but this seems right in line with what's going on with the rest of our nation. You can't call equity, you can't call it for what it is, even though we know what we're seeing out there. We see what this is. And you can't call it a non-racial thing. You can't. I mean, I don't know else to tell you that, everybody sees through this. I mean, that to me just sounds like BS. It's fancy wording, you know? I don't think damaging our children with this. Equity and equality are two different things. We all know that, but do, does everybody else know that? Does anybody know what this even means? What are we gonna tell the children? What does it mean? Are we really gonna say that this school board has not provided equal and impartial education for the rest of, of this district? Or what are we talking about? I read what it says. Are we really gonna say that, that our children haven't had a fair opportunity all the way through? I'm, I'm just trying to understand what this means and really just skip through the crap if I would. Forgive me for saying that, but let's call this for what it is. It's not in line, nobody can give me an actual plan of what it is. Empowerment of what? How is it not lining up with what's going on? And you're right, cancel culture. I'll just call it for what it is. Me standing up here saying this may have blowback for whatever it is. I'm prepared for that. I'm already prepared for that. I really don't care. I'm very embedded in this community all the way through, from law enforcement to God knows who, all the way through. I, I hear it every day. I am on the ground level. I hear it from people every single day. They're over it. They're over this. There's no plan for it. You can't tell me it doesn't line up with what's going on right now, and then the mask's on top of it. I'm telling you, parents are over it. They're to the point of pulling their kids from school. We don't, I, I think it's gonna be poisonous unless we see what it actually is. I think bringing an issue like this that is pretty much a non-issue, it's been, depending on who you're listening to, is damaging to our children. I'm, I'm just gonna say it for what it is. I've already had to explain to my children this year.
Thank you. We're just, we're coming up on three minutes. In fact, we're there.
Okay.
Just some final comments.
Well, no, I just really would like to get down to the bottom of what this means so far. Can anybody else tell me what that means in this room? What that actually was referring to?
No, I think we're gonna, let's, yeah, we're gonna end it there. But thank you. I do appreciate your comments.
Okay.
And we do have community PLCs for anybody that's interested in getting involved with the strategic plan and having a say and making sure it's up to date.
I just want to know what it is. I'm trying to be.
Show up, and you'll find out.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Okay, any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna close public comment. We're gonna move on to item seven. Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have some online?
Miles Humphreys, you are unmuted. Please state your name for the record and spell it, please.
Yes, my name's Miles Humphreys, for the record. It's M-I-O-E-S, H-U-M-P-H-R-E-Y-S. And it's a privilege to speak to the Carson City School District again. I just want to touch on leadership a little bit. Leadership is something that, in my own personal opinion, and many others in the Carson City community is lacking via the Carson City School District. We are currently ranked 45th in the state as far as education. That gets a big F in, in the parents of the community's eyes. The mask, basically, which everybody touched on, was pretty appropriate and spot-on. And speaking of the mask, Superintendent- And speaking of the mask, Superintendent was talking about teachers that needed to be filled in the next year, and he also mentioned speech teachers and special needs and everything else. And with us being as far down the totem pole as we are in education because of the lack of leadership, the masks don't add to any benefit to where we're at and the teachers that need to come onboard and for the students that are trying to learn. It's completely ridiculous with the masks. I referred to you guys before with the CDC on the effects that it does have in the, with the children as far as the disruptions, as far as, well, that's a whole different side, but as far as the affection or affected rates with the children. And Florida, you know, not to compare states, but they're number three, and they have zero mask mandates, and they're number three in education in the nation. So if Carson wants to be a problem and add to the problem as far as our lacking in education in the state, continue to do the same old, same old. And the old saying is, doing the same thing and expecting different results is insanity. And so I know the school board is spot-on, and they care about the community, but I think they need to take a different direction. And one other thing that I want to touch on is, a few weeks ago, when they were, when you guys had the meeting about getting the kids back in school five days a week, it was pathetic, to say the least, because there were small samples of children writing in about how they didn't want to go to school. That's like asking a kid if he doesn't want to make his bed if he doesn't really have to. It was ridiculous. So I just thought that the leadership on behalf of the Carson City School District failed in many results by taking letters from children about school, and there's no kid that really does want to go to school.
Thank you, Mr. Humphreys. We've reached three minutes, but I appreciate your comments. If you have any additional comments, feel free to submit them to the school district, and we're gonna move on to the next bit of public comment.
See no other public comment online?
Renee?
Yes, Mr. Cassiopoul. I have a comment that was provided via email from Barbara Mathers. She would like the comment read into the minutes. From Ms. Mathers, she's a stay-at-home mom, and I've been homeschooling my third grader for the 2020 school year because I didn't want my kiddo going to school in a prison-like setting with all of the mask mandates and health requirements that are completely unnecessary for children. I flip furniture from home. Any guesses, any guesses how hard it is to work full-time and also homeschool your child while entertaining a very wild four-year-old little sister? I do not want to have to continue to homeschool my third grader in the next school year, but if the board passes the equity curriculum, I won't have much choice. I do not want my child being taught race theory. For parents who would like this garbage taught to their children, then they should do just that, teach their kids. This is not curriculum that should be taught in the public education system. Leave your race theory garbage out of our school system and teach my child reading, writing, and arithmetic, the three Rs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
No, Mr. Cassiopoul. That's all I have.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment. I want to thank everybody for providing it, and we're gonna move on to item seven. This is an informational update on the activities of the Carson City Schools Foundation for the 2021, excuse me, 2020, 2021 school year, and this is for discussion only. We have Steve Reynolds and Principal Chambers.
I'm Steve Reynolds. I'm the president of the Carson City Schools Foundation. It's a pleasure to be here and see many familiar faces again. Mr. Chambers, thanks for joining us. I'll just take a quick moment, and I'd like Mr. Chambers to talk a little bit about the need that exists with Jump Start this year. The foundation was presented with, several months ago, with the projection that there may not be money in the state grants this year to even cover any of Jump Start. We considered it for a period of time and waited for more news. We're very pleased to hear that most of Jump Start could still be funded for the coming year, but there was not enough money in the grant to cover everything that the school district has covered in the past. Now, there's been some discussion with WNC and some changes, and I think what I'd like to do is let Mr. Chambers talk a little bit about Jump Start, and then we'll talk a little bit about the foundation's fundraiser to help support it. So, Mr. Chambers.
Bob Chambers, principal at Carson High School. Thank you for having me today. This started, Scott Morrison at WNC, we started this process, and it was dire. How are we even gonna get Jump Start off the ground this year with the way funding was looking? We met multiple times. He worked really hard to get prices down for our students, which was amazing. And ultimately, a huge shout-out to Valerie Dockery in the Grants Department, who was able to, I'm not gonna say scrape up all the money, because it's a sizable sum of money, but go through and do all the hard work to actually fund Jump Start for our students. And we were left with a bit of a budgetary hole in the books section. And once again, Valerie Dockery, and I absolutely kind of said, you know, Bob, we might want to take this to the foundation, because this is the exact type of project that they would, they would be interested in hearing about. So over a couple of different meetings with Scott Morrison and the foundation, and Steve and Casey, we worked out, worked out a way to get our students the books and materials that they need, which is absolutely fantastic. And Scott Morrison is looking at even further cutting the cost of materials for our students with open-source materials. So just, and right away, plug and play. There's no, they don't have to like, go find a textbook. They can, I mean, basically get a link and start accessing their materials for free. So like, a lot of, a lot of thinking went into this process to find good products for our students at rock-bottom prices. And then also a shout-out to Dan Davis for getting all of this information out into the newspaper, because if I understand it right, already people have kind of heard the call and the need of our students in our district and are responding with donations. So it is absolutely awesome. Carson City School District thanks the foundation, and the students in the Jump Start program definitely will benefit from the foundation's hard work. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Okay. Too many different microphones in the last year. One of the things, Jump Start was, at least personally, very appealing. I wish we had it way back, three-deck, three lifetimes or whatever ago when I was in high school. I'd have sure used it, but it's great to see these students who are committing to get a good education and get it done quickly so they can move on to either higher education or jobs or whatever. And, you know, it's just a pleasure to see a program like Jump Start. You have a flyer that Renee was kind enough to pass out, and it's really the message that we are taking out to the public. This is exactly what the foundation, I believe, exists for, is to be one of those bridges between the school district and the public, between people who would like to support our students, people who'd like to support our teachers, but maybe don't know the exact way. Here's a great way to do it. By helping, we looked at it, and it averages about $100, a Jump Start student. Any contribution from someone for 100 or 200 or 300 is gonna be a big benefit to the Jump Start program and these committed students. We have already seen a response. Mr. Davis has done a great job in getting the press releases out. Casey Gillis has mailed out quite a few letters. We're distributing the flyer that you see in front of you. We're getting very close to the first $1,000 in our fundraiser, and we have, shoot, we've just barely begun the two-month process. So we, again, we look forward to meeting with more people in the public and showing them that, yeah, there's an organization that'll help it through the foundation, that'll help them support the schools, and we look forward to many contributions we foresee having here. So anyway, that's what we're currently pursuing. The fundraiser goes through the end of June, and any contribution that surpasses our need for this year will go to help support Jump Start and the other needs of the district. So with that, can we answer any further questions from any of the board members?
I'll open this up to the board first. Mike, go ahead.
I just think it sounds like a great project, so I'm glad you guys are doing that.
Thanks, Mike.
Anyone else? Hello, Lupe?
I just want to say thank you for supporting these students. I, for one, wanted to share how grateful we are that my daughter was able to benefit from this program, and thanks to that education. She's very, very advanced in her education and almost done with a bachelor's in engineering. So the quality of education that these students are receiving through this program is incredible. I would love to see more students benefit from this program. So thank you for doing so.
Richard?
Yes, I was just wondering if you don't collect enough money to cover all the children, the kids, is it gonna be based on need, or somebody might have to apply and show a need for the money?
I don't think we're gonna wind up going that direction. We've not discussed it. I suspect from how well it started that we'll not get, we'll be able to support all of the kids that are in the Jump Start program that are gonna need aid with their books and materials for this year. If it appears that we're not gonna reach there, then we may have to reconsider it. But right now, I guess, you know, the best answer would be, I guess, that we'll deal with if we have to, but I don't think we're gonna be, we're gonna have to go there.
Steve, Bob, I just want to say, sorry, over here. It's hard to tell. Yeah, I just want to say thanks for doing this. Jump Start's important to me as well. My youngest child, my daughter, went through Jump Start, and just like Lupe's daughter, got a nice, nice start on her four-year degree, and she's gonna be finishing school early as a result of that, and it's been really well. These are certainly divisive times, if you will, and this is something that I think everybody can get behind. And I just want to make it clear to everybody, the great job I think the school district, WNC, and the foundation have done to work together to keep these fees minimal, because when you talk about just needing $100 per student, that's fantastic. Anybody who's put a kid through college knows that one book alone can sometimes run you a couple hundred dollars. So keeping costs down and asking for such a nominal amount is, I think, good stewardship, if you will. And so I really appreciate what the foundation's doing here and trying to partner up with the community. So thank you very much.
Mr. President, can I just, I was asked to remind Mr. Reynolds that your organization is also matching funds?
We were gonna get there, but thank you. The foundation is matching funds, our needs. The first, any contribution that we receive up to six, you know, all the contributions from the public up until 6,000 to $6,000 will be matched by the foundation to help us reach the, reach our goal for this year. You, I'd like to also note that if you, anyone listening would like to make a contribution, you can go online to the ccschoolsfoundation.org website. You can make a contribution with a credit card or get the information so that you can send the foundation a check. Anyway, we are looking forward to not only meeting but exceeding our goal, and we appreciate, we appreciate the contributions that we've already gotten and the number that have already been promised, and look forward with working with the community to support the Jump Start program. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much. Any more questions or comments from the board?
Just kind of from the agenda thing, it said you guys are gonna let us know some other activities. What other ways can the public help the foundation, and what other things has the foundation done? I know it was a little tough with COVID, because we usually have the bike thing, but...
Stacy, that's a great question. Really, what the, what the foundation is about is finding financial support for the things that our students need, for the things that our schools need that isn't or can't be supported by the general fund. There's plenty of ways that our students can benefit from the extra programs that, you know, very simply, money can buy. And any person or any entity that would like to support that, the foundation is, you know, 100% transparent in how the money is spent and where it goes to. Any contributor can direct the money to a specific project, and if someone out there has a great idea that they think they'd like to fund, we'd be happy to work with them on that also. So Stacy, I appreciate the question, but basically, if you'd like to financially support our students, getting in touch with the foundation is a great way to do it.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Again, I really appreciate everything the foundation's doing, and yeah, it's all about our students, in my opinion, and I think everybody in this room would agree with that. So again, for the fourth time, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to item, sorry, we're gonna move on to item eight. Discussion and presentation on the instructional material selection process for online learning. This is for discussion only.
Thank you, President Cassiopoul. Tasha Fuson, for the record. I have joining me this evening Dr. Leanne Morris. Leanne is our instructional technology coordinator for our district, and she also assists me with computer science curriculum K-12. I asked Leanne to join me this evening because, quite frankly, I recruited her to help me in this, in this process, more so because she started an endeavor. She was able to join the Teachers Leading Change Project. We only have three teachers in our district who joined this project. I'm gonna have her talk to you a little bit about what that is, but it was quite a prestigious thing for her to get accepted into that group and be able to come up with a two-year plan for what her project was gonna be. So what it ended up evolving in, and again, she's gonna give you some historical background about what she was doing, but it ended up evolving into really looking at how our district was using online instructional materials for our students. In the Pioneer Academy, or soon-to-be Pioneer Academy, prior to that, as you guys know, we had Carson Online, right? So we have the evolution going on, but in Carson Online, we had a substantially smaller number of students involved in online learning prior to COVID. And then, of course, it just kind of exploded with the advent of COVID, and we offered our families the opportunity to either go full-time online at home or do our hybrid in school. So we, as you know, ended up with about 25% of our population this year being serviced 100% at home. So that created an interesting conundrum for us in that the tools that we had available for those classes... for, for those classes, although working for small numbers of students, then taking exponentially increasing the number of students accessing that program actually took the price and made it go through the roof. And so we wanted to look at sustainability. We have a three-year distance education plan that has to be reviewed every three years, and we were coming up at the end of that three-year plan. We also weren't really thrilled with our current provider for that distance ed plan, and that's Pearson, currently Pearson. That Pearson curriculum has worked really well at the elementary level, but for our middle and high schoolers utilizing that curriculum, our district educators who had been using it really didn't feel that it met the level of rigor that really we wanted for our students in the classroom. So it led us down this path. So that being said, we're going to talk to you tonight, overall, about where we are currently, what we've been doing in the last two years on this project, and where we're going to go next year. Okay? So again, to start that conversation, I'm going to have Dr. Morris talk to you again about the Teachers Leading Change Program and what her work encompassed last year.
We can go to the next slide. So good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening, and thank you, Mrs. Fuson, for the opportunity to help with this project. I want to give a little bit of a historical background about where we started with this last school year. As Mrs. Fuson mentioned to you, I was very fortunate to be a part of a cohort called Teachers Leading Change that is actually put together by our NWRPDP Northwest Regional Professional Development Program. And part of that program, it's based on what they're calling teacher, teacher leader competencies. It's all about teacher leadership. And so being a part of that program, they asked that you come up with an action research project, that you really dig into those teacher leaders, teacher leader competencies. And so last school year, as the slide shows, knowing that we needed some intervention programs at our middle school, specifically, I was focused on helping Eagle Valley. We embarked on using Edgenuity's intervention program called My Path. It's specific for intervention on math and ELA. And so we, the, the students that were in the lowest quartile on their SBAK scores were the students that were participating in this program during that school year. I went monthly to the school, sometimes more than that, but helped the teachers if there were any issues with the program or what kind of additional training that we might need. So that's how we started with using the platform, Edgenuity, last year was using that intervention program. So we continued to use that. It seemed to be working well as an intervention program. And then we know what happened in March of last school year, when, you know, everybody went remote. And so with all of that, the students were still able to use that program, but the, the best part about it was the teachers that were helping the students on a daily basis. So we didn't really see the results that we thought we might just because of what happened last year in March. So then, we're now forwarding to this school year, the 2021 school year, and we know that we have our hybrid learning model that, that we have been using all year, as well as the remote learning that we have a lot more students, as Mrs. Fuson had mentioned, in the program than we have ever had before. And so I'm going to turn it back over to Mrs. Fuson, and she's going to talk a little bit about our process that we went through, and then I'll come back.
So then, we, we really started having conversations with our site leaders about how the, the programs were working on their campuses at the beginning of this year. We were using, as I said, Pearson, a curriculum for all sec, our high school, and now Edgenuity is what we chose to use at, at the middle school level and in elementary for our distance ed. I believe you're all aware that our teachers were actually providing and creating those curriculum materials. So we had three different programs going in at three different levels. And again, what we found is we just weren't really sold on the fact that any of them were, were what we were going to want to do moving forward after this year. And so we, we said, okay, it's time for us to get a collective group together. Instructional materials for online distance education is a kind of a unique situation. Technically, they're not textbooks, right? So we have a textbook adoption policy in our district, but this is an entire platform that compasses hundreds of courses. And in past practice, the Department of Education allowed districts to write a distance education plan and include the program that they wanted to use. So as I said, we used Pearson. We turned in Pearson's entire catalog of courses, which was over 200 and something, and said, okay, so the students in the Carson City School District can access anything that's in this catalog, and we will give them credit for that, and it'll go for graduation. Well, two years ago, after we had submitted our three-year plan, which comes to its conclusion at the end of next year, so we had just submitted our plan and got approved, the Department of Ed changed the process and they said, no, we are going to require all of our providers to go through a review process for every single course, to map every course, to make sure every course that's offered within that program matches Nevada academic content standards. So as you can imagine, that is a lot of work and quite daunting, because what was said by the Department of Education is you can, they started the work and the vendors submitted their courses for review, and the Department of Ed put together teams, et cetera, to put it together. And then they came up with a list, but if you wanted to actually utilize a vendor that was not on the list, then it was going to be up to districts to do that course-by-course approval process, put together the documentation, and then put it up to the Department of Education, State Board of Education for approval. So that, obviously, quite, quite concerning, right? So as we started having that conversation, we knew that we were not going to want to, nor did we have the resources to do that for any vendor that had not already started the process at the state level. So what we did is, in September, then, we sent out a request for information to all of the vendors that have been previously approved at the state, right? So we, that's how we winnowed it down. We said, okay, we know that they've been approved at the state, we know that these are groups that we're going to want to consider for our district. Then in October, we got a team together, and Leanne and I started talking about who needed to be on that team and what resources and materials that we would need for that team. Leanne is amazing, as you all know, because she's been with our district for a long time. So she went to work doing extensive research on different rubrics that have been used across the country for these types of selection processes, so that we could then come together and personalize a rubric for our district to use. So we did put together a rubric. We're going to share that with you briefly, or at least the tenants of that. And then in November, we got together to prepare for our first meeting, which was on November 6th, with the, with the team as a whole. We set forth meeting dates for the team. The team members were, of course, myself. We did have principals from Carson High, Pioneer, Carson Middle, and Eagle Valley. We had the Director of Accountability Assessment, the Director of Elementary Curriculum Instruction, IT, Student Support Services. We had our distance ed coordinators and the assistant, assistants at each site, as well as all of our curriculum coordinators. We had an EL designee, gate designee, tech integration, and implementation specialist. So we had quite the group to start out with. And we thought anybody who actually would have daily need to access the program or work-related need to access the program, or anyone who it would affect their actual job, we were inviting to be on this team. So that, that's the group that we started with. I'm going to have Leanne share with you a little bit about the rubric.
So after doing some extensive research, as Mrs. Fuson just mentioned, we came up with, this was actually from a template that I've referenced at the bottom from a e-learning tool evaluation from the Center for Teaching and Learning. And so we modified it to make it work for our needs. And so what I've done is I've actually just taken screenshots of the four sections of the rubric. And so the, the first one is functionality, and then we have accessibility, the teaching presence, and then the technical and the data and, and the usage. How does it interface with the current systems that we have? I hope that you have this presentation in a digital format, because the actual title of this is a hyperlink to the evaluation. So if you wanted to dig into each one of those different categories or topics, that you, you could certainly look at that yourself. I, I can speak to any of the specific criteria if you would like. We just wanted to make sure that you understood the rubric that we used in order to identify what we thought was going to be best for, for our students in this remote learning, you know, as, as we're moving forward, and to help us choose which vendor would be the best, would be the best selection if we weren't going to be sticking with Pearson, as we have been using for the last three years.
So in essence, on that, just that first area, when it comes to functionality, what that really looked like is we were looking at ease of use. How, how easy just as the platform, is it intuitive for users? We were looking at things like tech support and the availability. So if a student is at home doing online learning and they get locked out of the program, how easy is it for them to get support either, usually it's through the vendor because they're at home using internet services, so it's not usually a district IT issue, right? So what, how easy is it for them to get tech support? Hypermodality. So, you know, that's actually a really technical word. I was going to pretend like I knew what it meant, but I'm going to actually look at Leanne and go...
Text, audio, video features, what kind of interactivity does it have?
I literally just admitted that. I know, I'm like, I froze. I froze. I'm like, hypermodality, okay. And then data dashboard. So what kind of data could we pull? Meaning, can teachers have access to reports that are user-friendly that show them how are students doing, where are they in the curriculum? Can parents look at data on a dashboard and know how their kids are doing? Can students look at their own dashboards to see how well they're doing? So that's functionality. Accessibility, really focused in on things like offline access and printed materials, right? Do they have access to that cognitive or enhancement of cognitive tasks, tasks and higher-order thinking? So here, we were getting to the, to the, is it really as rigorous as we want? Metacognitive engagement. We didn't want kids to get bored. We wanted that, we wanted to have a program that was actually interactive, that they were doing things with and not just sitting and reading and clicking buttons to answer questions, course design, et cetera. So that was accessibility. Also, accessibility addressed, like the types of in, in software program enhancements. So did it have text-to-speech for students? Did it have translation for students? Did it have, you know, bilingual dictionary available, that types of things? So we were looking at accessibility through that lens for our special needs students. What types of supports did it have built into the program? Teaching presence, this had to do with, again, things like collaboration, user accountability, facilitation, customization. So from a teaching perspective, were students isolated or were there opportunities for them to actually collaborate with their fellow students in the platform? Did it have, like I said, a way for us to hold students accountable for the amount of time that they're actually engaging with the curriculum? Were we able to customize it to make sure that it matches? A good example is the way that we sequence our courses in middle school for social studies and science, because we don't want, we want a student who's online should they choose to come back and see it, or vice versa, not to have courses out of sequence, which then would throw their schedules aside. And then learning analytics, again, do we know, overall, as a group of students, do we know if they're struggling with certain standards? Because then can teachers use that information to do small group interactive Zoom, reteaching of concepts, that type of thing, is it the teaching presence? And then technical privacy, data protection, and uses. And really, this was Raymond's team who went through this with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that we, we were in line with all of the requirements for data privacy and that our system could support it. So we really looked quite in-depth at each one of the programs that we considered to make sure they met all of these needs, and then we use this rubric to actually score them, to say, for instance, you can see in the, the rubric, which is the white section, does it work well? Is there minor concerns? Are there serious concerns and comments, right? So if it has minor concerns, can we work around that? If it has serious concerns, then we had to say, is that a big enough issue that we, is a no-go for our district? So that's what that rubric looked like.
And so after we reviewed each platform using this rubric, then we invited each vendor to do a formal presentation about their product. And so this screen shows that, as I had mentioned before, Edgenuity, we had used in the 2019-2020 school year, as well as Pearson as our K-12 platform. Remember, Edgenuity in the 1920 school year was just for that intervention. So it, it made sense for us, since we were already using Edgenuity, to go ahead and start the school year out. So that column is labeled just August of 2020, when we started. So the, the program for Edgenuity now is called CourseWare. It's not the My Path intervention program. And then we're, we were, we have been using Pearson, K-5, and, and also 912. Mrs. Fuson mentioned that we, there was training done. I did a professional development on using Edgenuity with all of our teachers on special assignment in August to help them understand more about it when they're helping the middle schools. And then in September, working with our science and social studies coordinators, we really did some customization to make sure that that's where, where they were in alignment. So I just put these in alphabetical order. That's their, that's the particular order that they happen to be in. So Apex Learning, we were impressed with their product, so we had a vendor presentation on December 4th. Notice that it is only a secondary platform, and so that was, you know, something that we wanted to keep in mind as we were looking at all of these, all of these platforms. We were impressed with it enough to want to see if it was something that we could pilot. Knowing that we had already used, had been using Edgenuity, that was kind of our pilot happening with that one. So it was great that we were able to bring Apex on at the high school level in order to really see what, how it was working and what that looks like for the high school level. As I mentioned, Edgenuity is actually a full suite of K-12, but it, it could be a little bit misleading in that the CourseWare is 612. We, of course, are only using it for 68. But I did put the little screenshot up at the top. The PathBlazer is what they're calling their K-5 Intervention Enrichment Program. So it wasn't really a full, a full CourseWare, and they were so overwhelmed with the number of school districts across the country that were wanting their services, they actually denied us even really bringing that even to a pilot. So that was not something that they were, they just couldn't be stretched so thin that that's, they were honest and told us that. So once again, we had their formal presentation on December 4th also. Another vendor, Edmentum, that has been around for quite a long time, and as Mrs. Fuson mentioned before, each of the, the individual courses are now being approved at the State Department. So the individual courses at the high school level are the ones that are listed. If you go to that resource on the Nevada Department of Ed website, you will see that Edmentum has like 300 different approved classes, nine through 12. But what we, when we were going through their entire list of programs, we were very impressed from their presentation with Calvert Learning. Unfortunately, it has not been approved yet, and contacting the Nevada Department of Ed, we were not even able to pilot it because they, they couldn't guarantee that our, our students, if they were using that platform with it not being approved. So we had to step away from that. But I also just wanted to, to draw to your attention that we have used several Edmentum programs in the past in our district, Exact Path Study Island, Reading Eggs. You might have heard of those programs before. So that's a very quality program, and from that December 11th presentation, we were hoping that that might be something we could pilot, like you said, at the elementary, but it, it wasn't approved.
Some of you may remember the old Play-Doh courses. So those are really what the product was of Edmentum for the secondary. And the, our experience with those Play-Doh courses is that they were not as rigorous or as high quality as we wanted. Interestingly enough, these parent organizations typically purchase in, in smaller groups, and then they, you know... then they, you know, they kind of put them together into a package. So really, Edmentum had just purchased Calvert Learning and hadn't had the opportunity to put that through. That's an elementary curriculum. So that's why we were excited about having an option to put side by side with Pearson. But since that was not, had not gone through the approval process, the really sad state is that Pearson is really our only option for elementary at this point in time. So I just wanted you to know that as we continue to talk about secondary, secondary, secondary. It wasn't that we didn't go exploring and requesting information on elementary substitutes. It's just they're not out there. That being said, we were much more, we're much more satisfied with Pearson at the elementary level. Their elementary program is actually pretty solid curriculum. It's just their secondary that we were not as impressed with that we've been using. And Pearson, really the biggest barrier to that is their cost. They're extremely expensive program for not what we would expect in return. There's much less expensive options for students that are higher quality, in our opinion.
Excellent. Another vendor that did provide an RFI when we asked for that request for information was Florida Virtual School. After our initial evaluation with the rubric, we felt that that was not in our top three. So we did not ask them to do a formal presentation because we knew that we were going to have to narrow it down anyway. And so, but we did want to give credit where credit was due and that they did submit, you know, information and we did carefully look at, you know, what they did have to offer. It is K-12, but it was not, it did not seem very robust across the spectrum. So that's why we didn't have a formal presentation from them. And then Pearson, their specific platform that we've been using, Pearson Connectus, they actually did not submit an RFI either because we, of course, have been using them for the past, well, longer than three years, but at least for this contract. And so we were very familiar with them and, you know, having our distance ed coordinator and assistants be able to answer any and all questions based on that platform. And so that is, those were the particular vendors that we, you know, reviewed and did have the formal presentations. And so now I'm going to let Tasha talk about kind of where we're going and how we're moving forward.
So in the midst of doing all this work, with the intent that we would not change vendors or platforms until next school year, again, thinking this is the end of a three year agreement we have with Pearson, we're actually finishing year two of that three year distance ed plan that we'd already had approved at the state level, trucking along, thinking we're doing okay, and then we get the bill from Pearson. Just going to be honest with you. The first semester bill from Pearson was two and a half times the amount of the annual budget that we had set aside, that we had estimated for online learning. Quite a shock. And after numerous, numerous, numerous meetings with the vendor to try to resolve how they calculated what they calculated and why we couldn't get clear data and just hitting up against a wall, I talked to the boss's boss's boss numerous times, if that gives you an idea of how that went, we decided to make a quick shift for second semester at the high school level. And we shifted from Pearson to Apex. And the team, as we were going through, said, okay, this is going to give us an opportunity to do something that we hadn't previously planned. And that is, we obviously know what Edgenuity is looking like in the middle school. We know how our students are doing. We're already getting parent feedback and student feedback and teacher feedback. This is going to give us an opportunity to actually see Apex in action at the high school and pilot it for a semester. It obviously had been approved at the state level, so we knew that it was an allowable program. But we wanted to then, before entering into an agreement, and typically it's a multi-year agreement simply because of cost savings, we wanted to have an opportunity to give it a try. So we shifted very quickly prior to the end of the first semester. So we started working with them actually in December and got it launched for the second semester and shifted our students from, high school students from Pearson to Apex. So that is part of what we did in the spring. We had teacher trainings for them, for any of the teachers that were utilizing it. The difference is, and in all fairness, I'm going to be honest with you, in all fairness, Pearson courses come with Pearson teachers. They're not Carson City School District teachers. So one of the challenges we've had is although we're actually assigning our own staff to those courses as well, in essence, students are having a teacher that progress monitors them, that's our teacher, and then they're having a teacher somewhere who's Nevada highly qualified, who's actually grading and doing stuff within the program, right? So that's the way it's working with Pearson. It's really expensive. When it comes to Apex, it's our teachers. Our teachers are teaching and our teachers are progress monitoring. So that's how we set it up for a second semester. So we had to train those teachers and we had to set up the integration work that needed to be done with Apex. And we did that and then got it launched. Then in February, we had a follow-up session with our teachers in Apex so that they could ask questions. They'd been using it now for a little bit around a month so that they could, you know, problem solve some questions and answers. And then we got our committee back together again to, again, talk about feedback and how we were going to gain feedback from all of our stakeholders, or not necessarily in this particular time stakeholders, but the teachers. So Leanne actually was able to set up a session where we invited all of our teachers who are utilizing Edgenuity and our Apex teachers. And we had a student on there and we had a couple of parents on there, got them together and said, okay, we're going to give you a questionnaire, basically based on that rubric, like how is this working for you in terms of platform? How does the, how engaging are the courses that you're working on, et cetera? And in essence, the feedback from that group, it was very interesting, is our stakeholders using Edgenuity said, yeah, okay, it's okay, but if there's something better out there, we think we should go with it. And obviously, it's hard because they didn't know what Apex looked like and the Apex teachers didn't know what Edgenuity looks like. So it's hard to compare programs if you're not working both of them. So that was loud and clear for them. Okay, it's not terrible, but it's not the best. Then we had our stakeholders for Apex, again, including a student from Carson High School who had used Pearson, as well as some parent input. And hands down, the Apex folks were very happy with Apex. The, our student from Carson High said, you know, I did Pearson, I was on Pearson and it was fine, but Apex, for me, is much more engaging. The way it's set up is that every 10 minutes, you're, as a student, you're expected to do something that's engaging. You can't just look at a screen and, you know, look away for an hour or whatever and then like, you actually have to interact with the software. And so we asked her, you know, so how is that going? Have you been able to monitor your progress? Does it give you clear enough information? One of the things she shared with us that she absolutely loved about the program is that it actually creates a calendar for a student and it shows the calendar of when all of your activities are due or all of your assignments are due. So it puts that for them. That is, this is the only program that had that option for students. So she was very positive. All the parent feedback, again, that we have from those families that were using Apex, very favorable. Our curriculum coordinators who would work with both of the programs said, hands down, Apex, in their opinion, was a much better program in terms of the curricular match, the rigor of the curriculum and the ease of customization. And I'll tell you, the customer service from the Apex team has been just phenomenal. And then to give you an idea of the cost, is it about, it is literally about one tenth of the cost of what it would cost us to continue with Pearson for a better product. So it is, yes, it's remarkable, the difference. And, like I said, the customer service is amazing. So that's, we've gone through those meetings to get that feedback. And this, as Leanne said, this is an interactive presentation. So we're, Edgenuity is underlined and Apex is underlined. If you clicked on those, and I won't do that for the sake of this, but you would see all of that feedback. So we collected all the feedback from the students, from the staff and from the parents, and it's all listed in there so you can actually read their feedback from both of them. So at that point in time, the consensus, we took that feedback from those teachers back to our selection committee on the 2030, April 23rd, presented it to them and asked them for their recommendations. And it was unanimous, the recommendations were for us to move forward with Apex. So the nice thing for our district is we will be using, we'll still have two platforms because we'll have Pearson for our elementary. Again, we don't have another option at this point in time, but for 612, moving forward, we'll have one platform. The intent is to have that one platform. So, okay. So I think that's what actually the next slide looks like. So on this slide, I'm sorry, so Leanne had kind of walked you through this a little bit before. So it shows you on this that in 2019, what we used for reaching, what we're using in 2020, 2021. And the plan again is next year to use Apex 612. And actually, it's, we're going to use Apex, I'm sorry, 712. I think we're going to be using Pearson for K-6. So that's a little correction on this. And that is simply because working with Pioneer Academy, it looks like we will have one elementary highly qualified teacher that manages our elementary up through sixth grade students. So we're going to use one platform so that teacher doesn't have to use two. That's the only reason for the shift. When it comes to sixth grade, we could actually use either, right?
And then as a wrap up, what we're planning for the summer, because we will be, what platforms we'll be using for summer school and then moving into the school year 21, 22. So working with Apex, we've had meetings with our science and social studies curriculum coordinators, as well as our ELA and math coordinators, because we know that the courses are going to have to be customized for summer school in order to fit into that three-week period of, and making sure that the rigor is still there for those core content areas. So in, I'm getting, I'm in the process right now of setting up those meetings so that we can get that work done, so everything is ready once summer school is ready to launch. In addition to that, of course, training for the summer school staff that will be responsible for helping the students with this. And then as we move into June, the curriculum coordinators are going to take another deep look at the, if there's any customization that needs to be had with the alignment of standards and the scope and sequence of the way we have the courses set up in, obviously, face-to-face classrooms. And then we'll have any training that needs to happen for any new staff that are coming on or just a refresh as we launch into the school year in August. So that's where we're moving forward. And we certainly would like any questions that you might have from what we've shared with you this evening.
Any board questions? Stacy? And then Rich.
Just a thank you. That's an incredible lot of research and getting stuff done in quite a short time. It's pretty impressive. And of course, wouldn't surprise me that you're behind it, Leanne, but I don't know when you sleep.
Thank you, Stacy.
But I do appreciate that and finding us a better way to provide this. And I'm really excited about having Carson City School District teachers instead of having the Pearson teachers. So I do appreciate all the hard work and the rigor that you guys put into this.
You know, trustee Wilkie, I really appreciate that because actually that was one of the selling points too. And it's, it's just even for our own staff, right? They said how awkward it was to be like this progress monitoring person, but not the person who's actually controlling the academic end, if you will. And for our students, it was very odd. Again, the really exorbitant price is because we're paying for an online teacher, not our teacher. And then we're also having to pay for online tutors because the online teachers, because who knows where they are, they only have to be highly qualified to teach in Nevada, right? They have to have a license, but they could be in New York or wherever. Then our kids having access to them was very limited because they had like office hours that wouldn't line up with the kids' school day. So then you had to pay for 24/7 tutor because if the students were working at home, they need to have access to. So it just continued to pile up. So I agree with you. That was one of the biggest selling points is we know that our educators are going to do a much better job building those relationships, being able to manage and support our students and make the accommodations that the students will need to be successful within the program. You know, they'll be the ones managing that. So that was definitely higher priority for us.
Rich, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. It sounds like a good time to switch or, you know, to continue to switch. But I'm wondering, with the cost of Pearson going up so much midstream or whatever, can you, on the Apex in the contract, is there going to be a limit of how much of a price increase it could be during the tenure of the contract?
So I'm glad you're asking that, Vice President Verner. So that's one of the things my next step is after making this presentation to the board, I'll start working on, we do have a pricing proposal. The pricing proposal does, we have an option of doing a one, a two, a three or four year pricing option with them. And the price structure that they set up, it actually reduces the price every year. But the really nice difference, just to kind of explain, the difference between Apex, which by the way, is short for AP Experience. The company actually was developed to create AP Advanced Placement courses for districts, rural districts that didn't have access to advanced placement. So that's where AP or Apex comes from. But the way Apex's price structure works is we pay for a district-wide access, unlimited access. So we can have as many students as we want on the program, taking as many classes as we want, one price. The way a company like Pearson works is you pay for every single student and every single course that they take. So, you know, that's why it was so difficult to manage. So if we had students take one class at a time, as an example, I'm going to tell you, it's $360, $360 a semester, okay, for a semester course. So if a student takes one class at a time and finishes this class and then takes another class and then takes another class for a semester, it could only cost $360. But if a student takes two at a time, now it's $720, et cetera, right? And if you overlap a course by one or two days, it's now $720 because you're using two licenses instead of one. So it was very difficult for us to do any kind of actual planning on how to manage the fiscal end of that. So again, with Apex, unlimited access to all the courses for all of our students in our district. So we know when we pay that bill, that that will be it.
Okay, but it shouldn't double or triple?
Correct. Okay. So in the, in the projection that they've given us thus far, if we, if we enter into a four-year pricing agreement with them, this year is actually the most expensive year. It goes down each year.
Okay, good.
And another cost savings I'd like to add in, we have had to go to an outside vendor this year for our computer science class. We have new computer science and integrated technology standards. And Pearson did not have a class that met that requirement. So we have been using a vendor, an application called CompuScholar. And so that has been an additional expense this school year, but we're so fortunate that Apex has a brand new class that has just been approved for that semester graduation requirement, Computer Education and Technology. So that's going to be a part of Apex as well. So that's, we're not going to have another vendor that we'll be using, even though we've been very satisfied with them, but it was definitely an additional cost.
In addition, we are going to be piloting tutorials through Apex this summer for Pioneer's Summer Academy for rising ninth graders who were significantly credit deficient. So their tutorials are based at being able to identify where students' learning gaps are and giving them individualized instructions to fill those learning gaps. So the course is personalized for each student, so we're going to be using that for our rising ninth graders at Pioneer Academy this summer. So that is another exciting piece that is part of this opportunity.
I just have one more if I could.
Go ahead, Rich.
Is there enough rigor with Apex to keep the kids busy, you know, five days a week? So they're spending the same amount of classroom time, for lack of a better term, as an in-seat student?
Again, another excellent question. That's actually the reason, another reason for customization. So the way most of these programs work and the most of the vendors work, they actually come up with a estimated average amount of time that a student spends to pass the course or complete the course, right? So when I say average, they track and say, okay, you know, this student might have only taken 40 hours, but this student took 80 hours, so average is 60 hours, et cetera. For the state of Nevada, a semester credit is typically seat time rated at about 60 hours of instruction. So within the Apex courses, right, we can do some customization. For example, right now, as Leanne mentioned, we're customizing courses for summer school. So if you look at the English one course, our rep told us, you know, there's four novels that are typically read in the first semester of English. four novels that are typically read in the first semester of English nine. For summer school, it's probably not appropriate. You know, it's three weeks. I don't think you're going to want your students to read four novels in three weeks. So we're able to customize that and go, okay, well, we're going to move this, but we need to make sure we hit the standards. Right? So we, that's what the customize, customization is about. So yes, that being said, that's what I mean as an individual teacher. So I'm a classroom teacher with a group of online students next year. And I noticed, I, I have a student who was on an IEP and that student is struggling because of processing time. I can then customize the course for that student and remove a couple of the activities that, um, that will make that course more achievable for the student while making sure we're still hitting the standards, uh, and be able to work around that. Or second language students. So yes, again, the overall course design was meant, like I said, this company, their, their claim to fame is the rigor in their courses. So the, the customization is usually to take those courses and, um, lighten the workload a little bit for kids versus kids are knocking them out in 20 hours when they're supposed to be spending 60, if that makes sense. But we have the ability to customize it.
Yeah, that makes sense because that was my concern is because the way I'm hearing now is some students, you know, they're doing two days worth of work and taking three days off. And I just want to make sure that that's not going to be the case.
That is the same thing we've heard. So the other part that we can actually track with analytics, uh, so we talked a little bit about the analytics that they have within the program, is we can literally pull the report to say, here's all the students that took this course that passed. How many hours did they spend in active engagement? So we have the ability through Apex to look at that and the teachers have the ability to watch that in real time to know exactly that.
Good.
The other fun thing from the student end, I'll just tell you, that, that was interesting feedback for us, is many of these vendors, their curriculum is like online and students can actually Google answers and find exact tests, et cetera. Right? We've been hearing this. Our, our student did share with us that, that, that is not accessible. You can, that does not happen in Apex. Apex does not put their curriculum online. So it actually is making it more difficult for kids because there is not an easy way to cheat, if you will. So that was a plus too. We were like, whoop, that's a good thing.
Yeah, well, it sounds like a good program. Thank you.
And in addition to the analytics, um, as Mrs. Fuson mentioned, about every 10 minutes, the students are interacting with something on the platform. That is also awesome because a student could log in and it looks like they're doing something, but they really haven't done anything. Well, that times out and so it's a much better metric to, you know, to be able to see what they're actually doing within the platform itself.
Oh, very good. Any other board questions? Just a quick question, I guess. Um, just, I know we don't, we can't do anything about it at the K5, but with Pearson, have you noticed if other vendors were open, is, is Pearson competitive financially at the K5 level?
It is competitive at the K5 level. Um, well, considering Calvert Learning is the only other option we had, but the pricing structure for Calvert Learning was close to, actually it was less than Pearson, but it was pretty close. I mean, it wasn't like the gaping difference that, you know, we've seen, um, for the other, in the secondary realm.
Okay. Oh, great. Thank you. Seeing no questions? Thank you very much. That was informative. I appreciate that. Moving on to item nine, 2021 Nevada Legislative Update Report on Items of Interest Relating to Education. This is a, this is for discussion only. Superintendent Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I've, uh, tried in this little presentation to not cover the same bills that you may have learned about or heard about in other presentations. And, uh, should be noted that we're about three weeks, maybe, uh, four weeks away from the end of the session with, uh, a lot of, uh, decisions to be made between now and then. Probably most importantly, all of the budget closings that are, uh, scheduled to happen in just the next little bit. I wanted to, uh, identify for you tonight, AB 67. As you recall, the 2019 legislative session, we had a bill called AB 168. And there were a lot of questions around that. If you recall, there was uncertainty as to what role the Board of Trustees would actually play in the suspension of students. There were also questions about restorative justice. And, uh, AB 67 helps clarify a lot of those, uh, different situations. Uh, within this bill, it, uh, more clearly defines suspension, expulsion and permanent expulsions. And it also allows the Board of Trustees to designate, uh, an individual that, uh, is able to function on behalf of the board rather than requiring the board to be part of suspensions or expulsions. Uh, for the next bill, I wanted to just call your attention to AB 257. This is a bill that has, uh, had quite a bit of discussion. And it is a, if passed, this particular bill would require the school districts to, um, assess and improve ventilation and filtration systems. We feel like in our school district, we're in pretty good shape there. Almost every time we've had a capital project of some time in any of our buildings, we've taken a look at the, uh, not only the ventilation and the filtration systems, but also the controls. For example, this year during COVID, we've been able to evacuate the buildings air three times a day, once we got past the wildfires this season. And so, um, uh, the interesting part about AB 257 is that it's, uh, it's permissible. So it's not mandated if you don't have the money. So that's one of the caveats here. AB 167 is a bill that would require any of our student identification badges to have on the back of it, contact information for the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. And, uh, that's not a bad idea, but, uh, you know, it would be one of the things that would, um, need to be provided to our schools. And, uh, if this particular bill passes, we'd want to make sure that that information I know I've mentioned this before, but SB 215 is, uh, an interesting bill. And it's one that could introduce to the state competency learning. And that's the kind of, uh, mechanism where students would not be required to sit through a certain amount of seat time. Uh, Mrs. Fuson talked about the, uh, Carnegie unit essentially and that 60 hours of learning time that's required to actually earn, uh, particular credit. In this particular bill, there's provide, um, a provision which allows students that are able to, um, move faster on their own to complete coursework in shorter time. And so essentially they'd be introducing an alternative, um, schedule for students. And that's something that again is part of, um, taking into account the, the different abilities of students in particular coursework. It also, this bill requires districts to develop and publish a plan for distance learning, which as you heard tonight, we're well on our way towards all of those conditions. And, um, any distance learning process would also require that, uh, both students and teachers have access to the technology, both the devices and connectivity. And then, uh, you don't have this document in your pocket, but I did receive an update from Dr. Brzinski, and I wanted to share a few of these items. This one, um, may be of interest particularly to trustee Wilkie. AB 105 has to do with, um, adding some detail regarding the NIAA Board of Control. And so anytime that, uh, that particular body would meet, it would be, uh, if this bill passes, a requirement that at least three members be those who are parents or guardians of pupils who participate, and also three members who are pupils currently participating in any sanction sport. So that would be a change to the usual and customary.
Right? And, and we've been trying to figure out from the board perspective, how that would work, just like having appointed school boards. How do you, how do you determine the parents and how do you determine the students and how, how long are the terms because, and how does a student make it without losing class time? And yeah, that, that bill is scary.
I don't know whether or not, uh, just the current school year and the introduction and use of Zoom meetings may have contributed to some of that being where it is now, but it would be a challenge.
I think it mostly came from the COVID and for a lot of the parents and the, the students were, felt very out of the loop. And so this was their way of getting their legislators to get them in the loop.
Okay.
So we're hoping, unfortunately, it looks like it's going to pass.
This particular bill, SB 352, is, um, a bill that would allow for any individual who's in a position as a paraprofessional, if they had interests in becoming a teacher, that they would actually, under this bill, have access to an accelerated program to teacher licensure. So I think there's a, a lot of, uh, consideration for trying to, um, help school districts gain access to licensed individuals. And so they think if, uh, if an individual is positioned in a school district because of his or her abilities as a parapro, if they wanted to take coursework to get towards a teacher licensure, they would actually, uh, have some, uh, ability to move through that program a little quicker. Let's see. One that has, um, some folks scratching their heads, we have SB 249. And this particular bill would allow students to be excused from attendance in school for behavioral health reasons. And so it essentially gives, um, students an opportunity to be absent, absent from school with an excuse from a, a mental health professional for up to three days. And, uh, I'll end with SB 172, which, um, is interesting as well. This particular bill is to provide a uniform grading schedule for certain courses. Uh, right now, as you know, AP courses and honors courses in high schools, uh, result in a student's, um, weighted grade point average. So there's a, there's a certain advantage that students who take, uh, honors and AP courses get in a bump in their, um, grade point averages. So, um, there, this particular bill introduces the idea of taking students who are enrolled in dual credit courses or courses that, uh, can be taken for college credit, uh, including international baccalaureate classes, to have the same basic grade point bump as what AP and honor students get as well. So we'll, uh, wait to see if, uh, all of these bills are, um, able to be moved through the process and put into, um, the form of a law. And then of course, it will fall to us to, um, make and provide the necessary policies that are associated with these particular things. And again, I know that, uh, the Department of Education's, uh, budget closing was to be heard this evening, might even still be going on. I'm not sure how late they go. But I knew that there was a, a big list of, um, finance, financial related bills that were coming up, uh, not only tonight, but throughout this week. So we'll be watching, uh, those activities with great interest and we'll report that information back to you as soon as we have it available to us. Any questions or discussions for me?
Laurel, do you have anything to add from Nancebee's legislative that wasn't covered?
I don't have anything to add at this time.
Oh, thank you, Rich. I appreciate the update, as we all do, I'm sure. Move on to item 10, Approval of the Consent Agenda. This is for possible action. So moved. We hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any board discussion? Any public comment on this item?
Seeing no public comment online.
Thank you.
No public comment, Mr. Cassiope.
Thank you. None in person. Back to the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 11, informational items for discussion only. Any comments on the informational items from the board? Seeing none, we move on to item 12, Request for Future Agenda Topics.
Now that, now that it's May and then next month is June, we only have a year before Mr. Stokes' end of his contract. So I'm hoping that we're going to start working on that so that we have clarity and transparency for the public.
We are. I, um, we, we briefly chatted with, uh, Superintendent Stokes about this a few weeks back, maybe. And then trustee Verner and I chatted a little more yesterday. And at the beginning of this meeting, um, I was thinking about it again. And so to answer your question, yes, we need to be getting on that pretty soon. I'd like to have more time than less time so that, you know, we can vet this properly and not find ourselves rushing.
Maybe AJ, the next time you go over the budget with us, is we can find out some of the other programs that aren't funded? Cause I had no idea that Jump Start got cut. And so maybe just a little blurb about what programs or what people, what positions are going to be gone because of funding.
Any other items? Okay.
I don't know if this, I'm sorry. I don't know if this needs to be agenda item or not, but one person mentioned tonight in a public comment about the Carson City School District being, uh, 45th in the state. And I'm just wondering if there's someplace to find out where we actually rank compared to other schools in Nevada? And I don't know if that needs to be an agenda item or is there someplace I could look to see where we rank?
There are, yeah. Richard, you want to?
Well, I, I'm not really sure what that particular person was referring to because there's 17 school districts. So if they're saying that we're 40-something, I don't know if he's referring to high schools or if he's researching, referring to something else. But, um, over time, we have provided a lot of detail and information about the, uh, conditions of the school district. This year is certainly not one that's, uh, uniform when compared to anything else that we've done in the past. But, uh, we can, I think we can probably put our heads together and try to provide you some comparative data. Uh, I know that, um, closer to the, uh, middle of the summer and of course this year, um, it's unclear just how much detail will be available for accountability purposes. I, I think some of that is still yet to be made known, but we should be able to come up with something, I would think, that, uh, we could provide for.
I know this year may be hard, but maybe even just historical up to when the pandemic hit, maybe where we ranked historically.
It's a national, it's a national ranking.
I, I think that's what he was referring to, but he did say Nevada. And that just got me thinking, uh, curious where we actually rank compared to other schools or districts.
Tasha, you want to?
I do. Tasha, a few something for the record. I just want you to know that they, our state does not rank order districts, nor do they rank order schools. That information is literally, does not exist. I don't, it, it, it doesn't exist. Now, there are outside entities that come up with their own ratings for high schools, for instance, based on AP enrollment or AP test scores, but they are not official in any way, shape or form. And I can tell you, as the principal of Carson High School previously, every year I would get notifications from at least three or four different people out there wanting to send us, um, things for our walls because we had placed 20th in the state for AP enrollment, you know? So it's all very arbitrary. So in terms of the state, or or any information that's shared with us whatsoever in terms of data, that rank order, rank ordering does not exist. I'm assuming the gentleman was referring to a national ranking in terms of the state of Nevada, but I, I don't, I, I don't.
I think so too, but I think your clarification right there probably for the public is important also that the schools are not ranked, you know, and that we're not 45th in the state.
Well, Richard, I, I know we'll get emails about this. And I can tell you in the past, I haven't looked at anything recent, that ranking also is, is a generalization. Because when you go on there, depending on who's ranking you, what I've found in the past is, there can be, I, I've seen up to 12 categories in how they rank you. And you can be 48th here, 35th here. I'm sure somebody's number one. And yeah, if we were ranked number one by everybody, arbitrary or not, that'd be great. But you know, just to close on that, I'll just say, I've tracked some kids, my own included, and see how they do at higher education. And just because somebody says Nevada's ranked, let's say, 45th, I haven't met a single kid yet that's struggling and has been at the bottom of their college class. Our kids are performing and competing just fine. Anyway, any other future agenda topics? If, Mike?
I would just suggest that if we're going to embark on a presentation about that, it would be after we get the budget finalized. I mean, we have a lot of big-ticket items and I'd much rather focus on those things in the next short, short little span here.
Well, actually, I would draw that as an agenda item because I think Ms. Fuson answered my question. So it does not need to be an agenda item, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. And, and Mike, I agree with you. You've got some big items to tackle and we need to stay focused on that. These are pretty important topics. Okay, last chance. Any future agenda items? Seeing none, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Goodbye.